Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners on December 1st, 2021. And we will begin with the Commissioner's public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And we will now have department updates. Ms. Cottle, welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. Today I will start with our advisories like I normally do. Monroe County does remain at a yellow advisory this week. We did see a fewer decrease, slight decrease in the cases per 100,000, but we also saw a slight increase in our positivity rate. So it did keep us in yellow. It could be worse, so I, at least it did not get worse, but we do need to see some improvements. We did expect that we would see fewer tests done over the holiday and that, you know, has held true. So we'll be paying close attention to what happens in the next week or two post-holiday. Our vaccination percentage is rising with new eligibility. Fifty-seven point seven percent are now fully vaccinated and fifty-eight point four percent have received their first dose. Now remember that we were over that 60, but when we added the new eligibility group, that changed those percentages. So we are seeing lots of uptake at the moment and we're pleased about that. Does make things a little more challenging, so again, patience is needed. Our super shot clinics and the schools on the 18th and 20th went very, very well. We vaccinated about 800 children. And on Saturday, for about half of that clinic, we had to go to paper because the registration system was down. So we probably could have done a couple hundred more had we not had to go to paper. But we're pleased that we had so many people interested in those. The mobile clinic that was here, the 17th through the 20th, did over 1,000 vaccinations and over 400 tests while they were here. And we have started our school-specific clinics and those will continue into the new year, as well as vaccinations at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic on Miller Drive. We are also working on another mobile clinic and possibly a short-term mass site in the coming weeks or month. Ourshot.in.gov is still your best place to go and find vaccinations. I will say that most pharmacies have not yet started vaccinating our youngest people in that five-to-11-year-old group. So that is a good place to go and look for your booster dose at the moment if you're looking for that. That frees up our public health clinic to concentrate on those children. If you have questions about COVID-19 vaccine for children, maybe you're waiting because you've got some questions. There are several options for information, but one of them is tonight. It is from 6:00 to 7:00. We have a town hall scheduled via Zoom where a panel of local pediatricians will answer questions. Dr. Linton Toluquian from our Board of Health is a retired pediatrician and she will facilitate that event. It will be recorded and available for later viewing. So if you're not able to tune in tonight, there's a link to that on our website on the calendar for the Monroe County Government. And I shared that, maybe we can share that with people here as well. With the identification of Omicron, the new variant of concern, I know that there are many, many questions about that. And we don't have many answers for that right now. We are waiting to get more details and information as our scientists are looking at that and trying to get those answers for us. But there are some things that we do know. We know that vaccination is still needed. We know that wearing your mask is still needed. Washing your hands, keeping your hands away from your face, staying home if you're sick, if you have a fever, you're symptomatic, you've been diagnosed, following quarantine guidelines. If you are unvaccinated and you're in close contact, stay home. If you are vaccinated and you're in close contact, you do not have to quarantine, but you still need to monitor and it's advised that you get tested after day five, probably between day five and seven is ideal. The more the virus circulates, the greater the ability to mutate into new variants and the greater the risks that eventually our vaccines will not be as protective as they currently are. We don't need to let that happen and we have ways around that and it's vaccination. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that today is World AIDS Day. The Community AIDS Action Group has a panel discussion planned for this evening at 7:00 PM. I've also included a link to that. We have come a long way since the 80s and we still have a long way to go. The panel tonight will share their experiences of living with HIV. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good information as always. Do you have any questions or comments, Commissioner Givens?
Only that I saw in the paper today that IU is doing a virtual talk with Dr. Anthony Fauci.
Yes. Yes, that is Monday, I believe it is.
That'll be very interesting. It's disappointing that we don't have better news today, but I'd just like to remind everyone once again that vaccinations and masks are the way to improve this situation. So please don't complain about it if you haven't been vaccinated and wearing a mask.
Also, people need to get their flu shots, right?
Yes. Yes, we are seeing an early flu season, so now is the time to get that vaccination. And if you haven't had your first COVID shot or you're waiting on your second, you can get your flu vaccine at the same visit as long as you are going somewhere that has both of those vaccines available to you. You don't need to separate them by a week or two weeks like we did in the beginning.
Thank you. And with that, do we have any other department heads who would like to speak with us? And not seeing any, we will now move on to public comment, which is only for items that are not on our agenda. The comments will be limited to three minutes, as will the ones, the comments on items that are on our agenda. And after two and a half minutes, you will hear this tone, which will indicate that you have 30 seconds left to speak. Thank you. And I do not see any public comment. So we will move on to the regular agenda. First item, please.
I move approval of the minutes from November 17th, 2021.
Second, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll on the minutes?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. And next item?
I move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, November 24th and December 1st, 2021, and payroll, December 3rd, 2021.
Second, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners. I hope you're doing well today. The total for claims for both of those was $1,307,622.29. $330,971.93 was for Monroe County Treasurer for November Innkeeper's Tax Collection Distribution. $238,698.44 was for the East Lawrence Water Authority for utility relocation for the Hunter's Creek Road Phase 2 and Phase 3. And finally, $174,464.11 was for Anthem Inc. for November claims. The total for payroll was $1,611,483.42. $1,136,931.91 were for the direct payroll costs and $474,551.51 were for the indirect costs of payroll.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions, Commissioner Givens?
I had had a couple of questions that I got answered before the meeting, so thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will now move on to new business.
Move to approve the health officer reappointment.
Second, and Ms. Cottle again.
Good morning again. So the health board and the health officer have terms that are every four years. And of course, you appoint the board members and the board hires the health officer. So his term is scheduled to expire this year. And the board unanimously approved his reappointment for another term that would cover 2022 through 2025. And of course, with the changes in some of our Indiana laws, that now comes before you for approval before that is finalized. So we are requesting that you reappoint Dr. Sharp as the health officer for another term. He has been our health officer since 1976. He is the longest-serving health officer in Indiana.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments or questions?
We certainly have relied on both Dr. Sharp and Ms. Cottle throughout this pandemic. And so we're pleased to have somebody who's so actively involved and who will also take a stance when it's needed.
Yes, and I would like to thank him for his service for all of these many, many years. I'm sure the past couple have probably been about the most difficult that he's experienced. And I'd like to very much thank him for continuing on in spite of that. And is there any public comment? Ms. Crainer?
Good morning, everybody. I just want to say as a current board member on the health board and serving alongside Penny and Dr. Sharp that Dr. Sharp has just been such an invaluable community member. And not only is he brilliant, but his compassion and his understanding of health behavior and people is something that I have watched and learned so much from. And so I really, I have not much doubt, but I really hope you support keeping him on and letting him continue to serve Monroe County and the Monroe County residents. So that's all I really wanted to say. I just think he's been a really great gift for us for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no more public comment, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
And next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana Family Health Council Grant Amendment. Fund name, Futures, in parentheses, Title X, fund number 8126, and the amount of $45,000.
Second, you again, Ms. Cottle.
Yes, and I think this will be my third time and so the charm and I'll be done with, for the day. You won't have to put up with me anymore today. So we get Title 10 funds, that is family, federal money for family planning, and that comes through the Indiana Family Health Council. Those funds come to us usually in what I'm going to say are installments. So early in the year, we received an amount. And then as we go through the year, the grant cycle year, they assess what our needs are and then make amendments to this. So this will get us further into that grant cycle, which is April through March. And it is in the amount of $45,000. And then usually in January and February, they will reassess where all of the clinics are in their funding and try to figure out if people have money they haven't spent that could go to a different clinic and kind of even things out so that everybody can meet their budget and the needs for these clinics throughout the state. So our total Title 10 award will come to $105,961 for the grant cycle so far. We originally received $60,961.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Givens?
No, I'm just pleased that we're able to offer this to the citizens of Monroe County.
Yes, I agree with that. And it was also some very interesting changes that they made in it. And I appreciate them. And is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve 2021 Adult Protective Services Bonus/Hazard Pay Contract Fund. Excuse me, Fund Name, Adult Protective Services Fund Number 9112, and the amount of $15,044.47.
Second, Ms. Olyphant.
Good morning, Erica Olyphant, Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney. I am here to request that the Board of Commissioners sign the contract with the State Division of Aging to allow me to offer a one-time bonus to the Adult Protective Services staff in recognition of the difficult and dangerous work that they did and continue to do during the pandemic to be funded by federal grant money awarded through the state. The county council has already approved this bonus. The funding is available through a grant from the Administration of Community Living of the Department of Health and Human Services to the Indiana Division of Aging. This federal grant is meant to reflect appreciation for the work that the Adult Protective Services units have done during the COVID-19 pandemic. And the money must be spent by February 1st of 2022. As you probably know, the Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney contracts with Indiana Family and Social Services Administration to operate an adult protective services hub. And our hub covers Monroe, Morgan, and Owen Counties. The Adult Protective Services Program was established to receive and investigate reports regarding adults within the state of Indiana who may be endangered and, as appropriate, to coordinate a proper response to protect endangered adults who are victims of abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Part of the investigation process includes home visits to determine the conditions that a person is living in. Home visits are not necessarily done in every case, but they are done with some regularity. And the average number of home visits conducted by Adult Protective Services staff here in Monroe County was approximately 32 per month pre-COVID and post-quarantine. When, sorry, I lost my place here. When Indiana and specifically Monroe County went into quarantine in March of 2020, our Adult Protective Services staff continued to field calls for services and perform intakes on new cases. Adult Protective Services is an essential function, much like the Department of Child Services or our law enforcement. For the months of quarantine, which ended June 1st of 2021, Adult Protective Services staff only conducted a few home visits. But at that time, personal protective equipment was not widely available. There were many unknowns about COVID-19. There was no vaccine available. And many of the potential endangered adults are high-risk, as are some of the staff in my adult services unit. The end of quarantine did not signal the end of stress regarding known and unknown risks associated with COVID-19. Adult Protective Services staff could not get vaccinated until February of 2021, meaning that for nearly a year, the investigators and the director were in close contact with people during home visits with little protection from infection. Adult Protective Services staff had to make phone calls and complete paperwork associated with services and benefits for our endangered adults and those under investigation that they would not normally be responsible for because some of our partner agencies were not operating at the same capacity or with the same procedures as they normally do. The increased risk of the jobs combined with the increased tasks and responsibilities, all of which are direct results of COVID-19 pandemic, have caused low morale and feelings of burnout among our small staff. Monroe County's grant amount is $15,042.47. We just received the contract a week or so ago. You should have received it through DocuSign. Like I say, the county council has already approved this amendment to the salary ordinance for 2022. And so it is my sincere hope that you will join me in recognizing the service above and beyond normal for the Adult Protective Services staff and allow me to provide this one-time bonus using money through the Division of Aging. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments or questions?
No, I'm just really thankful that the staff continue to take care of such a vulnerable population. I feel like they deserve this.
Yes, I can imagine that their job has been considerably more uncomfortable over the last couple of years. And we very much thank them for what they do for the entire community. Is there, oh, thank you, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
All right, thank you. Let me know if you need to get this done. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Move to approve OSER Surveying and Mapping LLC Service Agreement. Fund Name, Surveyors' Corner Perpetuation. Fund Number 1202, and the amount not to exceed $13,750.
Thank you. Mr. Enright, Randah?
Yes, hi. Thank you. Good morning. Hope everyone had a great break and recharged themselves just a little, which might be hard to do with family and everything that you got, you know, to do during the holiday seasons. But I'll jump right into it. This is very similar. Actually, it's pretty much a cookie cutter agreement that you reviewed last time with Mr. Deckard for perpetuation services. This one is for Ms. OSER Surveying and Mapping. What was nice about this is it came just a little under the last cost. I'm going to just give a little more additional information so everyone is aware of how this is proceeding. The third agreement I had come in, I was hoping to kind of bring both of them to you. I wasn't comfortable with the price, the flat rate cost, so I rejected that agreement. So moving forward, I'm going to be working with a lot of the local professionals here to really set a price and then present a set price to them. And if they can accept it, great. And if not, then we'll move forward. But I don't like the way that the flat rate is coming in at multiple price points. But since this is a program that we're just getting up in its infancy and launched, this is the second agreement and I think I got a good path forward so we can absolutely be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and make sure that we're getting the best, and I hate this phrase, the best bang for its buck. So this one right here is actually Township 7 North, Range 2 West. That's our southern border. And so I am currently now launching the goal to perpetuate the entire county's boundaries and getting geodetic control so we can have a better representation on the way we use that in geographic information systems. And that's it in a nutshell. And I'm here for any questions, so please let me know.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, questions or comments?
No, I appreciate a better understanding of exactly where this is. Thank you.
Yes, I'm aware that surveyors are incredibly busy right now. So I'd like to congratulate you on finding someone to take this on and especially someone we're familiar with and who we've worked with before.
Yeah, and you bring up a great point and I think it's very notable to say. So one thing I attempt to do with the profession is leverage their compassion because they want the county perpetuated with this type of control and heightened standards as much as we do. And they know it's an added benefit for everyone in the community. So I've been able to negotiate a lower flat rate due to that fact of the mutual interest of getting the community perpetuated. And surveyors that are local, that's, you know, dedicated their profession in this area, are extremely excited about this and are willing to reduce their costs to achieve this goal. Currently, the way that we have it and that, you know, if we average the flat rate, you know, it's still, just to do the boundaries is an eight-year timeline. So we can talk about maybe how we can expedite that, but it costs money. And my dedicated fund only brings in a limited amount per year. But, you know, just that's where we are and we're moving forward. And I just wanted to make note that the surveyors understand how this is a benefit for the community, a benefit for them, their job, and are willing to even lower their costs. Not just make theirself available, but make it work.
Thank you to you and the community's surveyors. And is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 2021-56. Amend Monroe County Code, Chapter 285, concerning election districts.
Second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, before I go through the maps and all the information, there was some typographical errors on the ordinance itself. The maps that we, that the precinct and boundary advisory commission reviewed were the commissioner districts and the county council's districts. And they have recommended to not amend the map for the county commissioners' district, but amend the map for the county council districts. The populations have changed, so both tables would be amended. So the ordinance, and I sent to you an amended version this morning, would replace the map 285B and the tables 285A and 285B. And so I am going to present the recommendations that are, that the committee had and go through them. The first item, as shown on the screen, is the commissioner's map. And again, the map hasn't changed, however, the population numbers within each area has. And so the commissioner's districts will remain the same. There is some slight differences in population and the advisory commission looked at those and recommend this based upon the legislation and the communities at large. And so this remains the same. Can you scroll down to the tables? Now, the tables will be amended because of those population changes. I'm kind of going through the commissioners fairly quickly. I think one of the key factors with the committee was that the commissioner's district, the commissioner positions are voted on by everyone in the county and this is just a qualification to be able to run for that office, which is different than what we're going to talk about with the county council. So if we could go to the county So, if we could go to the county council map, there was a change to the county council map. State legislation has that these should be as equal as possible. And so, what we're looking at here is a change from what the past council districts were and that the blue area that's represented by Washington Township used to be in Council District One, and now it's in Council District Three. The, I'm going to call it pink, but it's probably got a different name. That area that is currently in Clear Creek used to be in Council District Three and has been moved to Council District One because of the population differences between those made the percentages much closer than they would have been before. And so, that was the change recommended by the committee. And if we scroll down, there'll be the information about the populations in each of the council districts. That is the change that's being requested and recommended by the committee. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I think we've talked through this at least a time before, so I don't want to get into a large amount of detail unless you guys are interested.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, first of all, I really want to thank the committee. They did six months of worth of work in a very, very shortened timeframe. So, I really appreciate their work and also the work of Karen Wheeler and Jared Ike Miller, who are county employees. I'm pleased to see that they got the council districts so that there's no more difference than two percent, which is really admirable. And I like the fact that with the tables, you can tell exactly which precincts are in each district. So, I appreciate that detail being made available, too.
Yes, I also want to thank the commission and Mr. Ike Miller and Ms. Wheeler for all of their very intense work on this. Unfortunately, the receiving the census information so late forced this work to be done on a very short timeframe. So, we very much appreciate what they've done. Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve James Graham Enterprises of Bloomington LLC. Fund Name, Motor Vehicle Highway, Stormwater and Cumulative Bridge. Fund Numbers, eleven-seventy-six, eleven-ninety-seven, and eleven-thirty-five, in an amount as needed.
Thank you. And you again, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and Ms. Ridge asked me to take her stead in this because she has a training today, and so hopefully she is doing well there. This is a contract for the use of flaggers as needed, as the county does projects. We have to make sure that the staff remain safe and the public remain safe, and so these flaggers would be used when the highway department needs the support and the extra help to keep the projects rolling.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, comments or questions?
It's not just the highway, it's the stormwater crews also. So, I appreciate the forward thinking on this, it actually saves the county money to do it this way.
Yes, and I'd like to comment that the flaggers actually are doing a whole lot to keep the community and our staff safe. So, when you encounter a flagger, please show your appreciation for them. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, would you please call the roll, Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I hope I got the changes correctly. Correctness, move to approve twenty-twenty-two Transit Assistance Grant and Approval of Authorization of Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixty-two. Fund Name, County General. Fund Number one thousand in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second, Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, good morning. You did perfect on that, Ms. Givens. This is the rural transit grant that you guys actually approved, the submission of the grant, I believe, in May of this year. This is the award of that particular grant. And Monroe County has pledged, and it is already budgeted in next year's proposed budget, the total of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fifteen, I think that's the total. So, just for clarification, the Federal Transit Authority and the state is going to be providing rural transit with one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. There's a local share of six hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and two dollars, and Monroe County is providing sixty-six thousand of that, six hundred and twenty-five of the local share. That's under the operating grant, and then the discretionary capital grant is a total of seventy-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five. The Federal Transit Authority is providing sixty-three thousand and fifty dollars of that, and Monroe County is giving eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen, and that is to, that will be used specifically for the dispatch equipment and, I think, H-back in the buses. So, this has been a long time support that you guys have provided for rural transit, and that they have actually provided for you. The resolution allows you to actually have this contract with Area Ten for them to provide these services to our community. And also, just for clarification for everybody involved, this grant and rural transit Area Ten covers Monroe, Owen, Putnam, and Lawrence Counties. So, the local shares are shared, it's not just borne by Monroe County government, the other counties are also providing input into those local components of the grades. So, I think that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments or questions?
No, I'm just glad that we continue to be able to provide services through rural transit. It's been really important throughout the pandemic that they continue to operate as much as possible. I still wish that we had a way to start to look at electric vehicles, but I'm told that our hands are tied on some of that, so we'll have to keep pushing somehow.
Yeah. Push it to state, because that's where the problem is.
Right, right.
I just wanted to ask, how is the share determined between the different counties? Is it by population or just?
I don't have the answer to that question. I, yeah, sorry, I don't have the answer.
That's okay. Not that important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of our new business, and we have no appointments today. Our announcements are, there are opportunities for people who live in one of the areas intended for annexation by the city to remonstrate against being being brought in. And you can come to the Monroe County North Door anytime through January sixth. There will be someone right there by the door, and they can help you walk through the remonstrance process. Now, through January fifth, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays only, from three to six P.M. at ten-ten South Walnut will be an opportunity in the public meeting room, this is Perry Township offices. On December thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, which is Monday through Wednesday, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, there will also be opportunities at the Monroe County Fairgrounds. And then, again, on Sunday, November nineteenth, from one to three P.M. at the Monroe County Fairgrounds. So, if you would like to protest annexation or remonstrate against it, please attend one of these meetings if you haven't already taken care of it. And you can call the Monroe County Auditor for more information at eight-one-two-three-six-one-four-four-two-four. I'd also like to comment that our Township Assistant Fund, Assistance Fund is still available and will be at least through the end of December. This is a fund that we work together with the council to supply extra money to the township trustees to aid people who are in danger of losing their homes through various different reasons or just to meet vital needs. If you have needs for any of these things, please contact your township trustee. Everyone in the county does, including the city, does have a township trustee. And if you aren't too sure who yours is, you can find that information on the county website, and it's also available in our packets on a weekly basis. We are inviting people to apply for boards and commissions for twenty-twenty-two. Most of those appointments expire at the end of the year, and either need to be, if their term is up, need to be reappointed or replaced. So, this is a great time to become involved, and you can find out about all the boards and commissions on the Monroe County website, which is C-O-monroe.in.us. And please, if you have interest in any of these, please apply, we would love to see your applications. In December, we have a couple of blood drives going, and these are in partnership with the Red Cross. And they will be on Thursday, December sixteenth, from ten to three P.M. and Friday, December seventeenth, from two to seven P.M. Both will be at the Mill, which is at six forty-two North Madison. And you can go to the Red Cross at redcross.org to make an appointment. So, please, if you have the opportunity, do help the community out and make an appointment to donate some blood. And Commissioner Givens, do you have anything to add?
No, I just, I was pleased that you talked about the Red Cross because I'm getting emails on a regular basis from them about the blood shortage in our region. And so, I know that it does save lives, lives of the elderly, the young, all kinds of people. So, if you're able to, I encourage you to get out, it's another way to give to the community.
Yes, this is certainly a very important thing to do if you have the ability to do it. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. We will return for our work session in ten minutes.
Sounds good.
At, let's say, at ten till eleven.
Okay.
All right, thank you.